We'll call the Bryan County Board of Commissioners July 8th meeting to order, please. And what we're going to do, we're going to have our honor guard from Bryan County post the colors. If you would, please stand while they post the colors. We can do the pledge of allegiance and that indication. Pledge of allegiance.
To the God of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Put your back in for a moment of prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for being with every single one of us in this prayer. Thank you to the leaders of this county tonight. They can lead us and make decisions for the future of our town. Jesus, amen and pray. Amen.
Amen. Right. Thanks. My word. I may be conceited. Thank you. That was our new honor guard from Bryan County, and this is, I think, their first appearance in Bryan County. Thank you, Freddie, for letting them do that. Um, right now, we want to do the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as submitted, but add an executive session for...
Personnel.
Personnel. That's right.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay, now, we need the approval of the May 2021 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the May 2021 meeting minutes.
One second. Second. Anybody say it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Okay, now, we have our engineering of non-public car and items, water and sewer master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, tonight, we have Trent Thompson from Thompson-Hutton to present just a general overview and a summary of the water and sewer master plan that we have for the, for the north end.
And they mistake it giving me control of these things. Um, so, again, good evening, commissioners. Um, just wanted to go over briefly the water and sewer master plan for, um, the north, new North Bryan service area. It consists of about 6,200 acres. It's the area you see in yellow in this exhibit. Uh, basically covers an area from the Bullock County line over to the Yegichi River and down to the interstate and interstate commerce center. Uh, within side of that is about another 2,000, 3,000 acres of development that's the industrial development zone, as we've called her, and development region. Uh, all in all, this entire area is going to account for about a million gallons per day of water and sewer. And the master plan we looked at was to evaluate water and sewer improvements needed for this area, again, to serve this, this larger 6,000 acre tract. Uh, again, inside of this is about a 2,400 acre tract that is, consists primarily of industrial light assembly type development. Uh, three primary tracks, as, as we've kind of defined them, working with engineering staff through the past several months. Uh, those are the Warnell Farms Track, the North Point or Westport Track, and then the Chesterfield Track. Uh, all told, these, this is going to account for about 479 ERUs, which, based on the new ERU fee calculated for this area, is going to generate somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 million dollars of capital recovery fees. Uh, again, it's going to account for about 17.9 million square feet. To serve this with water and sewer, uh, again, looking at the water first, what the master planning efforts produced is that we need a new well in this area, an upper floor and well, a new half man gallon elevated tank, 16 inch water main, um, and then also that is looking at the initial service area, and then this will be the trunk system to serve a much larger area in the future. Uh, right now, we've got, uh, the initial water and sewer in this area accounts for about 10 million, uh, between these two, two different projects. Second portion for the sewer is going to include pump station, force main down to the treatment plant, and a temporary grinder pump station, force main, facilitate some initial development to get things going out there. Again, just trying to keep up with, uh, the need of the market and new development coming in. Uh, all told, again, about $10 million worth of water and sewer infrastructure improvements in this area. Uh, and then, Audra, did, well, I'm going to speak to that. Uh, so, any questions on the water and sewer master plan?
So, Trent, just one, one point. Um, with this servant, service area, it shows that, uh, the service area is, is also east of, east of Eldora Road, up to the Yegichi River. Um, this is just for water and sewer. This is not any industrial, on the east side of Eldora Road, there's not any kind of, this has no indication of any kind of industrial. It's simply water and sewer.
That, that's correct.
That would be available one day, not even...
Yes, sir. Basically, what we looked at is in the, again, the larger 6,000 acre piece, we looked at, basically, following the comp plan, following, you know, sort of what the, uh, existing area looks like and how it could develop out, again, following the comp plan. It's kind of a mixture of rural, you know, rural residential, single family, potential for some commercial multifamily close to 80 and 280. So, kind of taking all of that into account, in addition to this separate industrial area is what we looked at, and again, trying to figure out the water and sewer needed to serve that larger area over, over time. Um, so, yes, I mean, right now, this is just a plan for the future, a plan of what would eventually go in that area if, you know, development was needed, or residents out there were looking for water and sewer. This would be the initial system that would go in and then branch out to serve that entire area.
And the point I was trying to make is that, in, in this plan at least, there's no, there's no intent to do anything east of Eldora Road, between Eldora Road and the Yegichi River, on Eldora Road.
That is correct.
There may be some water and sewer down 80, I guess, but...
Yeah, yeah. Basically, we're, what we're looking at and trying to account for is, you know, either existing uses or what, what future uses could be, making sure the water and sewer is sufficiently sized to serve whatever that may be. But right now, again, it's just looking, following the comp plan of development out there.
Good. Thank you.
And we're, we're going to vote on each of these items, y'all, as we go. Um, so, we know that the water and sewer master plan, we need to, uh, but we'll vote on that, vote on these items as we move down them, so we can get a motion to the water and sewer master plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution adopting the water and wastewater master plan for North Bryan County.
My second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, next, we have that water and sewer service agreement with West Point Development.
Item two is the water and sewer agreement with Westport Development Owner LLC. Of course, we just went over the master plan for water and sewer delivery up in the, uh, in that region there. This is for 764 acres of land. Uh, y'all, each seen the agreement, there are the details in the agreement. Uh, the recommendation is authorize the chairman to execute the water and sewer agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Westport Development.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the chairman to execute the water and sewer agreement between the Board of Commissioners of Bryan County and Chesterfield LLC.
Westport.
I'm sorry, it's on this.
West.
Yeah.
You gotta go back one.
Uh, we had it right there.
There you go.
All right. Let me amend that. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to authorize the chairman to execute the water and sewer agreement between the Board of Commissioners of Bryan County and Westport Development Owner LLC.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Item three is the water and sewer agreement, uh, with Chesterfield LLC. Uh, of course, this pertains to that same water and sewer master plan you adopted in the north, 816 acres, Pacific Track is located in your packet there, uh, well, as well as the agreement, so our recommendation, staff's recommendation is authorize the chairman to execute the water and sewer agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Chesterfield LLC.
Motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, make a motion that we authorize the chairman to execute the water and sewer service agreement between the Board of Commissioners of Bryan County and Chesterfield LLC.
Second. Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And then, next, is the transportation study for North Bryan County.
Item four on the agenda is, uh, adoption of transportation study for the northern portion of Bryan County, which was done in 2018. Of course, with the, uh, industrial activity, uh, up in this portion, it's good to have a, a base for your, uh, your, uh, your traffic studies that are generated. So, uh, what this is, provides that base, uh, in a rather procedural matter, where you adopt this into the record, then, uh, community development can, with each individual traffic agreement, tie one to this agreement. So, uh, in a minute, disagree. So, this is simply adopting this transportation study done in 2018, uh, to the record, as your transportation study for that region.
Any motion?
Yeah, we need a motion on that, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution adopting transportation study, uh, North Bryan, 2018.
Second.
Second, by way. Okay, any discussion on that?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now, we need a motion to, uh, close the, uh, close our public, uh, close our meeting and go into a public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the public meeting and go into a hearing?
A public hearing.
Public hearing.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Audra, you are up with the master development plan for West Point Development Owner LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you have two matters before you tonight on public hearing. They are master development plans. One is for Westport Development Owner LLC, which is for the Warnell Track, and the second is for the Chesterfield LLC, which is for the Alcova Blitston. First, for the Westport Development Owner LLC Track, uh, the commission approved the rezoning of basically five tracks of land in January of 2021. There were conditions placed on those rezoning approvals. One of the conditions was the approval of a master development plan. Uh, at the rezoning, it was also very conceptual in nature, so there was a condition placed on it that the owners come back with more, um, specific plans. Westport is presenting their plan to you tonight for official approval. While there's no official resolution or ordinance attached to this, staff would request that you do take a vote on it, and just so it's clear for the record that you basically have signed off on the zoning condition that they have a master development plan approved by the board. Also, the board wanted this to be a public hearing item, so it has been noticed and advertised as a public hearing item to allow public comment on it. So, Westport is purchasing what is known as the Warnell Track. Uh, their development plan shows approximately 6.3 million square feet of industrial space. Um, to just give a very general overview of, of their project, uh, they are proposing to subdivide their property into five lots with a new spine road, which I, I will show you when I, uh, bring up the map after going over this. They're going to have access from Highway 80. Uh, they are reserving right of way for connection to the Interstate Center Boulevard should that connection come to fruition. They will also be dedicating right of way along Highway 80. Again, their total square footage is approximately 6.4 million square feet of industrial space. They're proposing to develop in three phases. Uh, the spine road will come in in phase one, and then they do have right in, right out drives, uh, that will be constructed with buildings one and three. They have wetlands that are being maintained adjacent to the non-industrial zone properties, and then their full build out is anticipated to be summer of 2024. So, their new spine road is here. They're proposing that, uh, for county, eventually to be a county road and dedicated to the county. They are reserving, uh, future right of way should this connection through the Interstate Center come to fruition. Uh, they have the five buildings here. These are the wetlands that they are maintaining here and here, and again, they will have a, they will have an access here and an access here that will come in with each of these buildings. There were other conditions that were placed on the property, uh, as part of the zoning, and I just wanted to give an update on those conditions. The first one was a traffic impact assessment. That has been completed. Uh, we are still asking for some additional information, and we will be presenting that, we anticipate, at the July meeting. Um, that document will be the foundation for the traffic mitigation agreement contribution. That's also a requirement for the zoning conditions, and again, we tentatively, um, are, tentatively have that on the July 13th, uh, BOC meeting. The water and sewer agreement, uh, that, that has just been completed. They did prepare the master water and sewer plan, which was actually adopted as the county's master water sewer plan, and then, uh, the water and sewer service agreement was just approved by this board. The last item, and, uh, from the staff perspective, we heard loud and clear from the residents in this area that they were very concerned about stormwater, stormwater runoff and flooding in the area. There are conditions related to that, specifically the stormwater management plan. That type of document is usually submitted when civil, um, in, civil drawings are submitted to the county, and those are usually reviewed at the staff level. So, it's not that staff has ignored that condition or that the condition is, will not be complied with. That stormwater master plan will come in when they submit for their, um, civil improvements with the road construction, and staff will review that and, uh, make sure they are in compliance with all the county ordinances and state law regarding that. So, with that, that is my presentation, and we would just ask that the board approve the master development plan.
Well, this is a public hearing, so is the owner or representative here that wants to speak?
That's it. Mark, all in favor of development? On behalf of our team and our partners, want to thank the commissioners for their leadership and vision in this regard. Um, want to thank the staff for their commitment, hard work, diligence going through the process. It's, uh, it's fairly complicated, fairly technical, but we've made a lot of progress in the last 60 days, and so we're here to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I think we've all had an opportunity to, to, to look at this and study this a little bit, so, um, if nobody has any questions, okay. Anybody else in the public would like to speak for or against this? If you, yes, ma'am, if you would come up and state your name and address, please, for the record. Thank you all.
Good afternoon. My name is Tanelle Davis.
And I'm Clara Rouse. And, and the address is 11-835 Highway 2 East, and that's the, uh, address of my parents' property.
And we are the descendants of, uh, Elizabeth Knight and Henry Knight, and we have, uh, property along that, uh, stretch away that, I guess, you all, and we were wondering what impact that it would have on our property.
You're on 280?
280.
280, yes. And we have heirs' property, that is like 49 acres of heirs' property, and the property that my parents own is three acres right on 280.
Okay.
Can we bring that exhibit back up, Audra, that showed that track?
And Mark, if you'd like to address that? They're concerned about that traffic going right in that area?
How it touches our property and what kind of effect it's going to have. Because if we are residential, and then you're bringing all this commercial, then what's going to happen? We have enough in that area right now.
Can, can you tell where your property is located?
Looking at this.
By that map, roughly?
We're right on Knight Cemetery Road and Pratt Grant Road.
This is right around there, 280, 1016. They're right there. Somebody talk to me.
So, so if you just...
Tell me about the map.
If you would just address us, and then we'll have the answer.
Oh, I saw.
That's okay.
Okay.
It's okay. Yeah. If you just, and then how, they can answer that.
Okay.
That's our concern, is to how it's going to affect us. You know, we got Love South Street now, we got Harpitz on one end. Um, on the side that my parents' home is on, it's only three residential properties there. And then across the street, you have like about five properties across the street, and I just don't know what it's going to change to. You know, we're concerned about that. It's hard enough now to try to get out of our property and get on 280. So, it's just, uh, it's a lot.
Okay. Would you like to address that transportation in that area? I know we're doing transportation study up there for North Bryan, so, but if you want to explain, are y'all doing anything particular there?
Yes, sir. As Mr. Taylor mentioned, I mean, you guys just adopted the, um, transportation from North Bryan County. Um, in addition to that, there's been additional studies that looked at as that, that whole area develops. Um, there's phasing that'll be done, um, over the next five, 10, 15 years to, um, offset any impacts due to the additional traffic. Um, yeah, there is a lot of traffic over, out there right now. Uh, that's acknowledged with the truck traffic coming off of 80 on the 280. Um, all that's being considered. Um, there are ongoing discussions with DOT to, um, help with funding of those improvements, and just as the need arises, based on the, the analysis, um, those improvements will be put in motion. One other thing, uh, when we met with staff, when they, uh, we started the conversation, there was community concern about, um, storm drainage issues and the traffic, and we just want to assure everybody here that we're going to follow the guidelines, we're going to be good partners, we're going to do whatever it takes to mitigate whatever the issues are and leave it as good or better than we, than we found it.
We just want to be good neighbors. That's all it is that, that we want to do. So, by us, it's a lot of, you know, we have elderly, um, relatives there now, and we just like to be informed and know of all of the changes and everything that's going on.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question. So, what are you all voting on tonight? Exactly what's going to be voted on tonight?
So, this is going to be voted on, the master development plan tonight?
Just the plan?
Just the plan. Right.
Okay. And as the plan goes forward, it has to continue to come before you for any changes?
Right. Absolutely. Absolutely.
If it deviates from the plan?
Yeah. It deviates from the plan, they will come back, yes.
Okay. And then the plan, I want to make sure that, does it abut the property? Does it abut our heirs' property, what they're doing now?
From, from what it appears to me, um, it does abut your heirs' property. However, there's a large wetland piece that's between, um, that's between your property and where their first building will be. So, your property is adjacent to 280, and then, if you, if you look toward the, the bottom right corner there, you've got that, that green and blue, that green is, um, is wetlands protected, so it can't be developed without, uh, mitigating it, and I believe the blue is water and staging pond, I believe. So, so there is a large buffer. I can't tell you how far that is, not, not without a scale, but, um, it's a, it's a really, that is a really good buffer, and it's a natural buffer. It's not something they're having to put in there or build into it. So...
And that buffer won't change either as it builds, because it is in a wet, it is in a wetlands.
Okay. And then I have one other question. The roads that are going to come out, is it a road that's going to come out on 280, and exactly where is that road going to be, if that's the case? I know it's probably going to come one out on 80, but is one going to come out on 280?
There, there's not one designed to come out from this master plan from this subdivision on the 280, or this industrial park. There's one coming out on 80, and, and there's some thought that there may be one later that may come out on, um, Interstate Center Boulevard, which is where the warehouses are or the businesses are now. So, it'll direct traffic both ways from there.
And that will have to come back before you again, before it's approved? Or is that a part of this plan?
Any, any changes to that will have to come back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak for or against? Nobody else? Thank you. Audra, you want to do the Chesterfield Master Development Plan for Chesterfield LLC?
So, Audra, you think, and I know we probably can't get them tonight, but you think we can get some of these, um, exhibits, some copies of these exhibits? So, there are several landowners here that, from that area, so maybe they could look where their property is compared to how this is laying out? I think that would help a lot of people.
Yes.
Um, if we can get some of that available to the publics?
Yes, we can do that.
It'd probably be on the website, wouldn't it? Want it to be on the website, Audra, from the Master Development?
It's not, no?
And, again, we do have some of the exhibits on the website, but I'll make it clearer, and we'll maybe do an announcement through social media to let people know where they can access these maps and all of that, because it's, it's a lot of development, and it's on such a large scale. I, I really appreciate how difficult it is for everybody to figure out exactly where everything is coming in. So, the second item is the Chesterfield LLC. Uh, they are purchasing the Alcova Blitston tracks, and again, it was the same condition that their master development plan needed to be approved by the board, and it's subject to a public hearing. Their project, they are proposing to, uh, to have approximately 7.8 million square feet of industrial warehousing. The name of their project is the Georgia International Commerce Center. A brief overview of their project, they may subdivide into smaller parcels. They're not, um, committed yet to actually subdividing the property. It depends on the market conditions. Their primary access will be from Warnell Farms Road and Highway 80. As per the, as laid out in the conditions, no access from Eldora Road. Um, they do have to provide access to what are known as the Conley and Davis Tracks, so they're reserving that area to provide that connection. Again, their total square footage is approximately 7.8 million square feet of building. Uh, they are proposing eight buildings, but they may break them up into smaller buildings, depending, again, on market conditions. Like the Westport Development, they are doing three phases with full build out anticipated in summer of 2024, and they are going to dedicate the right of way along Highway 80. And this is their development plan, so this is the connection, uh, to the Conley Track, it probably went backwards, Conley Tribe, and this one will provide the connection to the Davis Track. Um, at the moment, there is, they're not anticipating connecting these roads together because there's a lot of environmental conditions there, and then, uh, their accesses will come off of Warnell and from Highway 80. Again, no access off of Eldora Road. Uh, they are basically at the same point as Westport, and I'm going to clarify a couple of things about what is done in the public, what will be done in public and what is done at the staff level. The traffic impact assessment is done. Uh, it is going to be presented to the board again, uh, we're anticipating at next month's meeting, which will be up in Pembroke. That is not subject to a public hearing, uh, but it will be a public meeting, and people can come and listen and, uh, get an overview of what... and get an overview of what the transportation improvements are for these two projects. The same with the traffic mitigation agreement slash contribution agreement. We would have that on the same agenda. Again, it's not a public hearing, but it is a public meeting and people can come and listen as to what is being proposed. At this point, also as a point of clarification, because I am hearing the public comment loud and clear, one of the reasons why we're not very specific at this point as exactly what the traffic improvements are are most of these roads are under the jurisdiction of GDOT. We can identify what we think the improvements are going to be. We can make recommendations. But at the end of the day, it's up to GDOT to decide how wide the road's going to be. Is it a traffic light? Is it a traffic circle slash roundabout? Is it limited access? So we will constantly be working with GDOT to mitigate any impacts to the public on us. Again, the water and sewer master plan was done and it was approved by the board. And their water and sewer service agreement was also just approved by the board. And again, the stormwater management plan, that'll come in with their civil improvement plans. And that will be done at the staff level. So with that, can you answer any other questions?
Anybody have any thoughts? Is a representative of Chesterfield here who would like to speak? Please come up, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. My name is Chance Rand with Chesterfield. My address is 3006 River Oaks Drive. And I would like to echo what Mark said earlier. This is a very complicated project. It's a very large project for the county. The staff has been wonderful to work with. And we too appreciate your support of our project.
Would anybody like to speak for or against this project? Nobody? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chance.
Thank you, Chance. All right. This time, we'll take a motion to close this meeting, public hearing, and open up our regular meeting to go back and vote on these items.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing and go back into our regular meeting.
Second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are going to vote on our master development plan for West Point Development LLC first. Motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the master developer plan for Westport Logistics Center submitted by Westport Development Owner LLC.
I'll second that. Second. Any discussion on that? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, now we need a motion on the master development plan for Chesterfield LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the master developer plan for the Georgia International Commerce Center submitted by Chesterfield LLC.
Second. Second. Alice, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Right now, we're on to our Community Development Engineering Non-Public Hearing Items. And this is the first reading for an ordinance, the Unified Development Ordinance and Engineering Design Manual.
So this is a first reading of an ordinance. This ordinance is specific to the Unified Development Ordinance. It proposes recommended changes to Section 114-3660. And these are changes reflecting proposed changes that are also being recommended under the Engineering Design Manual. So the intent of this ordinance is to propose the changes to the UDO to align with those recommendations under Article 3, Roadways for the Engineering Design Manual. Now, this ordinance right now is being presented for first reading only, so we are not expecting any official action to be taken. We will be scheduling this item for a public hearing with our Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting next week on June 15. And then we expect to have this back to you for a second reading in a public hearing at your meeting in July on July 13. At that meeting, we do plan to also present a resolution for the adoption for the recommended changes to the Engineering Design Manual at that time as well.
Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay. Thank you, ma'am, for the first reading. Now, our Community Development Non-Public Hearing Items?
All right. So this next item, this too, is the first reading of an ordinance. This is for an ordinance to amend the official zoning map. This is for property located on Highway 280. Parcel numbers 034-020 and 034-020-01. This is a request from V T R E Development LLC. They will be requesting the rezoning of these parcels on Highway 280 in order to rezone it to the I-2 General Industrial Zoning District. We will be presenting this at a public hearing with our Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting next week on June 15. And then this will be back to you for a public hearing at your July 13 meeting for a second reading on that ordinance to amend the map along with the final decision. For everybody's benefit, we do just have some reference maps available at this time. The properties are currently zoned RR1. And again, that request is to rezone it to I-2. The purpose of the rezoning is to combine it with the existing development that's currently underway on what's referred to as the Kelly Track. And they're proposing to use these parcels in order to provide a secondary access and connection into that development.
I mean, sorry to interrupt you. But can we ask those ladies to come back in? Because that is directly across from their property. And they may... And you may have to present a little bit again, if you don't mind. But I would like for them to hear it because that's... That was a concern to them.
Sure.
Where... You know, where's their property at?
So they're right across the street, almost right across the street.
That green?
Yeah. I just think it's fair that they hear that.
That large green track that's right across from you? That's the 49 acres area? Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
So I would like for you all, if you don't mind listening to this next part, because it was one of your concerns about a... About the road coming out of that piece of property behind you. But this is actually a road potentially coming across from your property or near your property. I'm not sure exactly how it lines up. So, Amanda, if you don't mind, thank you.
Not at all. So I will back up with just the general nature of the request. So they are requesting to rezone these two parcels to our I-2 General Industrial Zoning District, the purpose of which is to be able to combine these parcels with the current industrial development that's occurring south of Highway 280. And they are proposing to utilize these two parcels to put in a secondary access into the development. So they are specifically proposing to develop a new roadway and connection through these parcels to connect to that development, which will provide ingress and egress from Highway 280. So these parcels on the map, they're highlighted in blue. And you can see, based on this map, it is directly across from Knight Cemetery Road. There's Burger Hill and Knight Cemetery Road.
It's the two parcels of property is the... Used to be the Smiley Daycare there is the two pieces of property.
Whatever will come back. I'm sure it's across... It's going to be across the street, but it's going to be from the Knight Cemetery Road.
So the road that they're proposing is going to come in onto Highway 280. So it'll be on the opposite side of Knight Cemetery Road and will lead into the large parcel that's currently developing for those industrial uses. So... So with this request, and again, I'll provide the further information. This is just for a first reading. It's in order to put it before you so that you know what's coming forward. The public hearing for this is going to be with our Planning and Zoning Commission. The first public hearing will be next Tuesday, June 15. Their meetings start at 6:30. And then we would have this for a second reading and public hearing with the Board of Commissioners at your meeting on July 13.
So repeat that, June 15th, next Tuesday.
Next...
June 15th, Tuesday, 6:30, up in the north end of the county. At the Commissioner's Room up there.
Yeah, June 15th this year. So that's going to be back at this location.
Oh, I'm sorry, back here.
6:30 is that meeting time.
Okay, so is this being approved tonight?
No, ma'am. This is a first reading. This is just for information only.
Okay, thank you so much.
We just want to make sure you had the opportunity to hear here.
We appreciate it. We've gotten a letter that says something about 15th. So we plan to be back, but I'm glad you know why.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
The 15th.
Yes, sir. These are non-publicly. Go ahead, sir. This is just a first reading, so we're not voting on anything.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just a question, actually. I actually live in Pembroke, but I own the property right on 280 and Industrial Boulevard, right where the two houses are. There's one around the corner, one behind it. My two sisters live there. And with what y'all talking about bringing it over there behind Knight Cemetery Road, if there is a road that comes out to that Boulevard there, you know, you're going to have way more trucks than you've got coming down. Is there planning any time being a red light put there, you know, to get in and out?
Yes, sir. They're looking at that now. They're looking at that whole corridor to try to ease some of that traffic there, sir. Yes, sir. That is being looked at.
That was my question.
Yeah, that whole corridor is.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All right, Amanda.
All right. So this next item is also a first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map. This is a request from Sherman and Helm Street Real Estate Company. They're representing the property owners in this application. And they are going to be requesting the rezoning of property located at 5021 Wilma Edwards Road. The property is currently zoned RR1, which is our rural residential district. And they are proposing rezoning for the B1 Neighborhood Commercial District. This site is located right there at the intersection of Wilma Edwards Road and the Bill Fitch Road Extension. It creates that triangular shaped lot right there at that point where those roads connect. And they are, again, requesting it for the Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. They do not, at this point, have any defined plan that they've presented to us, but have indicated that they're looking for the rezoning in order to market the property for sale for commercial uses. The existing zoning in this area, we can see there's already some commercial developments. And so I think that they're looking to just rezonate to be in line with what's kind of already developing within that area. This is going to be with our Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing next week as well, on June 15. And then back before you at your meeting in July for second reading and a public hearing. And with that, if there are no other questions, we'll turn it over to Alder for our next items.
This item is a non-public hearing item. It's second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 6, Animals, Subpart A, General Ordinances of the Code of Bryan County, Georgia. This actually is an action item because it is a second reading and it will require a formal vote from the commission. Basically, what is occurring, the reason why we're presenting these changes to the animal... Basically, the Animal Control Ordinance doesn't usually come out of community development. With the adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance that took effect in January of this year, there were some changes in the... That came about in the UDO that create some conflicts in other sections of the county ordinances. There was a repealer provision, as we call it, in the UDO. Basically, it says if there's another ordinance in conflict with this one, this one trumps all the others. I could rely on that and not do anything, but that usually causes problems. So I am presenting to you formally repealing these provisions because they are in conflict with the UDO. There's two... There's two sections. The first one is Section 6-22. The ordinance will remove the table completely. And this addresses distance from the property lines for farm animals. This is no longer needed because it's completely addressed in the UDO. The second section is Section 6-30. We're amending it to update the zoning code references because we have new references to our zoning codes, which are R15, R-MHRM, and PUD. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions. And if you have none, I would ask that you adopt these changes.
We need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 6, Animals of Subpart A, General Ordinances of the Code of Bryan County, Georgia.
Second. Any discussion on that?
No discussion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next items, which are non-public hearing items four through seven, to just give a brief overview of the items and then I'll talk about them individually. Items four through seven are county-initiated rezonings per our zoning code and the county ordinances. We require two readings for a zoning map amendment. So this is the first reading for all of these action... All these items tonight. No action is required or requested at first reading. Collectively, all of these will be one project except for a portion of one tract. The P and Z at public hearing... P and Z meeting and public hearing is June 15 at 6:30 in Richmond Hill. The public is allowed to speak at that meeting. For those not familiar with the process, P and Z is our Planning and Zoning Commission. They do not make an official decision. They will make a recommendation on these rezonings to the Board of Commissioners. There will be a special called meeting of the Board on June 24 at 5:30 PM. That meeting will be in Pembroke. That will be second reading and public hearing. And then that meeting will be official action by the Board on approving... Approving with conditions or denying these rezoning requests. A comp plan amendment is also required for the tract that I'm referring to as the Butler Tract 1. That does not require two readings, so that will be presented to you at your June 24 meeting. So the first property that is subject to the rezoning is what is referred to as the Mock Track. Only 26.1 acres of 129 acre tract will be rezoned to I-2 General Industrial District. The remaining portions will stay A-5. And the property... The whole parcel is outlined here. GIS was nice in showing the area that is subject to the rezoning. That's approximately 26.1 acres. There is no site plan or conceptual plan associated with this. But it's my understanding, the reason why they have this layout is this will be one of the access roads to the site. And this is the current zoning map with the portion right here to be rezoned to the I-2 General Industrial District. And before I go on to the next item, are there any questions? The next property is what I refer to as Butler Tract 1. They are going to rezone 318.17 acres. So it'll be the whole property be rezoned. And it'll be rezoned to the I-2 General Industrial District from its current A-5 agricultural and RR1 rural residential district. This is the 318 acre tract here. And this are the current zoning of the property. So it's a split zoning currently. But the request is to have it all I-2. Any questions about that one? The next one is the Butler Tract 2. They are going to rezone 1,384.46 acres of the 1,463.46 acre tract. So they will not be rezoning the entire property. The main part will be I-2 General Industrial. And they're going to, with the remaining portion staying A-5. So this is the entire tract here. This is the portion here that will stay A-5. That's not subject to the rezoning. This will be the portion. Any questions on that?
So Alder, the part that's not being rezoned is actually on the Black Creek Church roadside of Black Creek. So it crosses over the creek and it was just decided not to rezone that?
Correct. Yes.
So it's A-5 now?
Yes. And it'll stay A-5. And the last one is the Sam Wilka Tract. That one is being rezoned as well to I-2 General Industrial District. It's 141.33 acres. And the entire property would be rezoned from A-5 to I-2. And that portion is this one right here. And to give a point of reference, this is the Mock Track right here. And then this is the current zoning map. And with that, because it is first reading, this is just an overview of the project. So no action is required of the Board. But if there's any... But if there's any questions, I'm available to answer.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. A lot going on up there. Bring us to our next point. It's, next we need a vote to approve the consent agenda. The ball's got it and looked at it. Vote to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second. Any discussion on that? Discussion, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Amanda, County Administrator, the LFAV Advisory Committee, recommendation for LFAV proceeds.
Yeah, item one is approve recommendations or consider recommendations from Brian County Local Victims Assistance Program Advisory Committee for the second six months of the 2021 for the funding of LFAV funds. Staff recommends approval of the recommendations that listed right there in front of you. You can see the percentage shares of each organization that applied for the fund and were qualified to do so. And again, this is the second six months of 2021.
Okay, we need a motion to approve that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that county staff fund the above agencies at the recommended percentages for the second six months of 2021.
Second. Second. Any discussion on that? No discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay. Consideration of water and sewer for GFA loan?
Item two is approve of water and sewer GFA loan with the number listed there above. Staff recommends approval of the water and sewer GFA loan for $9.9 million, roughly just over $9.9, at 1.58 for 20 years. This is the state loan fund. It's definitely going to get such a good rate and amount. The rate is lower than the current 10-year US Treasury rate. These funds will be used for water and sewer improvements if needed on the north end of the county. Recommendation is to authorize and execute the GFA loan agreement and have that on hand if needed for infrastructure improvements.
Okay, we need a motion on that one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize and execute the GFA loan, GF 2021008, in the amount of $9,961,000 at 1.58% for 20 years. Execute that agreement.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye. All opposed? That motion carries.
Item three, only agenda is a contract authorization consideration for family connection for FY 2022. That's July 2021 through June 2022, the state fiscal year. Brian County's long served as the fiscal agent funding source for majority of Brian County Family Connection. The attached contract is for fiscal year FY 2022, which runs from those dates you mentioned previously. Contract with the state of Georgia allows reimbursement of approximately $48,000 in expenses. Our recommendation is authorize county administrator to execute the attached contract with the Georgia, the county administrator or the chairman to execute the attached contract.
Yeah, motion on that one. For family connection. We need a motion.
So Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the county administrator or the chairman to execute the contract with the state of Georgia's Department of Human Health Services, Department of Human Services pertaining to Brian County Family Connections for fiscal year 2022.
Second. Second. All, any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Bring us to our last.
Item four is a consideration of award of a 48-month copier scanner contract. Brian County currently has a 48-month lease for 45 copiers. The contract's set to expire June 2025. Staff is obtaining quotes from Rico, also Cannon with a new lease for those copiers. In the examination of those prices, it's been ascertained that we could save $118,000 over a period of 48 months if new contracts awarded to Cannon Solutions America Incorporated for a 48-month copier scanner contract for those same amount of copies. Finance and the team of the copier committee did a good job researching this and going through it, obtaining those savings.
We need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve staff to award a contract to Cannon Solutions America, 48 months, copier scanner contract, vote for 45 copies. Copier and scanner.
Second. Any discussion on that one? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. We're spending money, we're raising the hand.
Hold on, hold on, decisions we just made.
I know, we're asking for the cap.
We were born.
Raise our hand. That's right. That's right. All right, brings it to our public comments. Does anybody have any public comments that they would like to make at this time? No public comments? We are going to go into executive session and discuss personnel, so I need a motion for that. Please, sir, somebody?
I think no one's going to the Commissioner's panel.
Let me come back in. Wade made a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye. We're going to go into executive session for a little bit. Come back and close our meeting.
For personnel purposes.
For personnel purposes.